Negative impact on eelgrass meadows. And they want to discussion on change that to eelgrass habitat. So what we did is we looked at a report by the Islands Trust Fund that looked at nearshore eelgrass inventory and talked about eelgrass habitat and how essentially it's quite varied and it has to do with light availability and the depth and the salinity and the temperature and a number of other factors. So staff came back and said, we felt that was maybe a little vague and hard to pin down in terms of lots of things can potentially be eelgrass habitat.
When is it a meadow?
So that's another, so generally.
That's the other side of that question.
Yeah, what's a meadow? So this Islands Trust thing talks about beds that are flat or continuously affringing. And it tends to be when we get biophysical reports, they identify when they're a meadow. So to have people show that there's no negative impact on eelgrass meadows, we have them do a biophysical, so they do dive tests.
Okay.
And they'll report and it's a certain density of eelgrass shoots. And so I think the motivation behind council's request is there was one dock that went in on the west side of the island where there were eelgrass shoots in the water. But the biophysical said, well, it's not a meadow, there's some, there's some eelgrass, but it's not a meadow, so there's some, there's not negative impact. So council paved the dock way forward because they felt like, okay, well, we said eelgrass meadows and it's not a meadow, there's just eelgrass. But they, I don't think they were entirely happy about it, so they, they wanted to look at it. So staff then proposed to change it to talk about negative impact from eelgrass meadows, beds or patches to capture those different things that the Islands Trust had mapped and identified. But, so then the other change being, so previously it had said, "It should be located such that will not impede pedestrian access along the beach portion of the foreshore." It now talks about will be located such that it will not physically divide a beach, impede pedestrian access, or limit or restrict public use of the beach.
Who's physically divided beach?
So that is language that was in our land use bylaw prior to changes. So when, when the current WG1 with those set of regulations went in, this is 2014, I believe in prior to that, it talked about physically dividing a beach.
And I was taken out for some reason.
Yeah.
And now I have the pushes to put about him.
Yeah.
And so I'm asking again, what does that mean? That sounds like anything that crosses it divides it.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I, yeah.
So.
No, we are, we don't want to be built.
The B, C, D, and E don't have, have no bearing because all beaches will do A, and so they're.
We're all docked on a, on a dock across a beach, yeah, might be. So like, so the Tunsil Bay, for example, that community association, if that wasn't there, they proposed it. We would say based on our bylaws, you know, physically divides a beach.
And so if it has a, is hurt in a storm, they can't be built?
Well, then it would be grandfathered, it would be grandfathered with respect to sighting, so they can maintain it, they can repair it. But they can't, if it's entirely gone, they couldn't replace it.
So is it 50% of the value, what's the?
So if it's a use, if it's a use that's non-conforming, it's 75% of the value above the foundation. If it's, if it's with regard to sighting, it's a different calculation, it doesn't talk about 75%, and it just talks about you can even maintain it, you can repair it, but you can't replace it.
Cause docks have to be replaced every number of years.
Yeah, so I think in essence, if you were a non-conforming because of sighting, if you replaced it gradually, you'd be okay.
You do a piece, you do a piece, but.
Yeah, so it's like replacing a, yeah, the boat when you replace each one piece.
Well, I just find this, it's basically to prevent anybody building a dock on Bowen on an island, and it just frosts me off that we're looking at this again. I think we put enough regulations in place.
Well, this is good, so now you get a chance to bone in that direction. Sorry, Dan.
Yeah.
Kind of jumped right in.
No, it's okay.
You can carry on if you, David, you have a question?
Excuse me, there's step A, can't be in there, it starts from O words.
Right. That's, that's supposed to be the intention.
Yes.
When it was, can I ask the corollary then?
Yeah.
And when it, when it was amended, the municipality had sought, I presume, some legal counsel. And then they, then they amended the bylaw and that phrase was taken out.
Yeah.
Was it taken out on the basis of legal counsel?
Like when the previous amendment?
Yes. When they, when the bylaw had that phrase in it.
Yeah.
And, and, and then actions were taken to take it out.
Yeah.
That was done because council sought, got, got some legal advice on how the bylaw should read. And was, and was part of that legal advice that you should not have a phrase like that in your bylaw?
So I guess I'd say one is probably if we received legal advice, it probably couldn't discuss it publicly. I would say that, like in drafting this bylaw, like with almost all our bylaws, so this current bylaw 466, that was reviewed by our legal.
Right.
Counsel. Like this current one with the language physically divided beach.
So it has, it would, it would go back to them, has it not yet gone to?
No, so it has gone, like.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
So they, they reviewed it and there's none of legal problems?
But they weren't really asked that particular question, they may, they may have just sort of glossed over.
You know, over the past probably five years, our legal, our lawyers have been quite adaptive at dock bylaws.
New specials.
Yeah.
Sir, do you have a comment?
Uh, no, I'll comment on it. You know, A and B, of course, don't make any sense at all in my, it's physically divided beach, impede pedestrian access along a beach portion of the foreshore. So those are two totally different things. If it physically divides a beach, it supersedes B, and like you said, probably the rest of them too. The discussion, well, the council voted for it, but of course it wasn't quite unanimous. The discussion was A, what's the definition of a beach?
Right.
And that's, we had a lot of problems with that and you could see some.
Yes.
See some information here to that effect.
Definitions from all of the charities.
And, uh, and it came down to, okay, who's going to designate? Because the definition of a beach is so sort of watery, it's just not, it's not very well defined. So it was going to go back to Daniel. And so somebody's going to make an application to put a dock in and Daniel's going to have to decide whether that dock's over a beach. Now, the other thing is recreational foreshore, which was never intended, I don't think, obviously it was, but that means that anywhere where you can get access to any beach below eye water, that beach could go on for miles. The other objection I had, of course, was that there's no map showing anybody what, what's going to be legal and what's not going to be legal.
Map of the island or drawing?
Map of the island. So if you are going to make an assessment of this, of this amendment, you don't have a map to tell you whether or not it's going to affect you.
Well, if it's part of the WG1 zone.
Or the, the, yes, but the criteria is it's going across a beach and the beach isn't defined.
Ah, I see.
So, you know, then you're, then you're coming to, you know, Daniel with a whole pot of money or something, saying, hey. But I mean, so he's getting, he's getting, having to make.
It's not a meadow.
Well, yeah, I know, you know, it's, it's just pretty wishy-washy and I, I just don't think it's fair to go to the public with that little bit more information. But anyway, that's.
So, I mean, I, I guess I have two questions. Number C was added as well, limited or restrict public use of a beach. I'm not quite sure how that differs, like what, what does that add if you've already got A?
Yeah.
You've got those two chunks, A and C in terms of.
So at, at the council discussion, they, they sort of were relating that to when there's like public access to a beach. If there's sort of area adjacent to that, that's not part of the beach itself, but is next to where the public access to the beach comes out, that that would be restricting. There's a dock there that's sort of impeding people from coming from the public access onto the beach.
Well, do, do the setback provisions address that?
I mean, they would as well, yes, there's that 10 year setback.
Because if there's public access, there's an easel for the public to come down.
Yeah.
And there's a 10 meter setback from that easel.
Yeah.
So I don't.
Wouldn't any, any dock would limit the public use of the beach, like for example, you, you're not going to picnic under the Tunsil Bay.
Right.
No.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of duplication. One thing that jumped out at me when I was reading the materials is the comment in the Island Trust report about accidentally removing the provision from the bylaw. Do you have any insight into that? On page 40? Well, Island staff, the Victoria State College section, that was accidentally removed.
Well, it was not accidental. That's good, that's good.
Well, I mean, I, I, they, maybe they just didn't understand what was happening.
Oh, right, accidentally. Yeah.
Cause I, somebody else raised, why was it changed back then? And I would be curious to know that before.
Yeah.
If there was a cogent reason for doing it then, and that reason still applies.
It was, it was changed because it was too restricted. Were you on council? No, it's been one on Nelson here, but it was changed because it was too restricted.
And now dependent on swinging the other way.
That's right.
Yes.
So I have another question, Gary, in terms of the point of A.
Yeah.
So obviously, everything else you don't even need if you just have A. So did that discussion come up with council? Like how was, how was A justified? In the sense that why bother with anything else when it just had A?
Well.
Cause A does everything.
Agreed.
So A made it impossible to even bother considering the other thing.
Well, I only went to A and B and, you know, Daniel and I had a discussion because I don't think B becomes absolutely superfluous.
Okay, I mean, I would say David, like D and E come into play differently. So I know, like, we've had a number of.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Right, like King Edward Bay and stuff where they're, they're on a block, right? And so then it comes into, we're looking at.
So I'm not.
D, D and E are about natural hours.
Yes.
It's about some hours.
Yeah.
But you're saying, you're thinking if something was, was rejected under A.
I just don't understand.
You can always, you can always use A to reject an application.
So there was no point even having the rest of the.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's not true from right.
Well, there's different circumstances, you could also have a dock that's not.
On a beach.
On a beach.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could argue that your dock is going.
That's your okay.
That's the way.
I'm going to do a beach.
But if everything's a beach.
Yeah.
Then you only need it.
And we don't know what a beach is because.
Well, except.
That's one of those things, we know it when we see it, but then if you ask particularly, I mean, maybe this is really in that field, but is there a possibility of zoning beach areas?
I think, so like there's sort of.
Should be a map.
Like, so I know looking at the previous council, when they put in this, so that was that 2014, we're zoning, looking through some of the files, they spent some time trying to define beaches, cause that would be one option, you just make it like WG1C and say there's no docks in these areas, right? Or something, like, yeah. And you'd have on the map, but you'd say all these areas have no docks, right?
Anybody who's born land, they would know that they're buying adjacent to a place where they're going to have trouble building a dock.
And I think the council got bogged down at the time in terms of, like, you start with beaches that everyone agrees are beaches and you go, okay, well, obviously like sandy beach is a beach, or pebbly beach is a beach, or tons of beaches, right?
Public beaches.
You know, as you get down the list, at some point, people are drawing lines at different points in terms of what are beaches and what aren't.
Didn't the, the, the PROX committee has a, they've done some work on identifying beaches.
So they map beaches that have public access.
That's all, okay. But there are other beaches that. But then they just, is there a public part of that beach? Like an actual owned by the municipality?
All beaches are public in terms of like below, high water. So they map beaches that have public access, so the public can access from, from land as opposed to from sea is what they have a map of.
Can I ask a, a slightly different question?
Yeah.
I, I'm worried that there are parcels on the island which are only accessible by water. So if I have a parcel like that, perhaps that's a beach in front of it.
Yeah.
With this bylaw, I can't put a dock in, spring my boat.
Well, that's.
That's the only way I can explain it.
Yeah, that'd be correct.
Yeah, that's such a pretty unfair.
That, yeah, that does seem right.
I, I, I would, going, going back to the actual wording, the fact that you have physically divided a beach, which is really very vague, I mean, physically divide, yeah, but how physically, you know, on the ground, in the air?
No, no, it matters, just, it's just if it's a line across the beach from overhead, that's, that's it, doesn't matter where it is.
But that's arguable, because you then have an impede pedestrian access and stuff. So that, that would start, start to say that you're defining it as, you know, physically dividing a beach being a different criteria than the others, not superseding everything. So it's not a be all and end all, that if you physically divide a beach, game's over for anything. You're sort of saying, okay, well, we, we've obviously defined it as something a little different because we, underneath it, we say impeding pedestrian along, access along portion, foreshore, limiting, restricted public use of beach. That, to me, if I was an attorney, would argue that, well, you have put these things in there, so you are de facto limiting this physically divided beach.
Ask Daniel with that physically divided, because we went through that in council. And under, under no circumstances does it mean that you can go, you, you cannot put, and as we said, you cannot put a line across the top of it if you're looking down, but you can't put a line across a beach.
A structure will inherently be physical.
Yeah.
If it, if it goes from the land to the water, it will cross something which may often be defined as a beach.
Correct.
Cause see what it is, it's a prohibition.
It is totally a prohibition.
And, but, and I don't know if this, I'm new to the commission here, and I don't know if we, we don't make the legislative decisions.
We make recommendations to council.
Yeah, but if the intention is to essentially prohibit docks on beaches.
That's what, just say it.
So say it, cause right now that just gives rise to confusion and the public not understanding.
And I, and I think it also, so the, the question, the, the question within that, which is, has the municipality been experiencing problems with the bylaw the way it stands now? With the zoning? With the wording? So what's behind the wish to change wording back to this?
Need to remove A, B, and C.
Then we have, then we have the zoning the way it is now, Dave.
Or A and C. B is currently there.
B is currently there, yeah.
That's not that, that just means you have to be able to walk underneath it.
I mean, I, I support the, the notion of improving habitat, so adding beds and patches to the eelgrass component, I have no problem with that. I'm, I'm totally challenged by the first clause.
So I think asking if it was working.
From multiple reasons.
Like in my time here, we've done a number of beach, of dock referrals. And I was trying to think, and I, I don't know if I can think of any that would have been across a beach in my time here.
How did you know that it was not across a beach?
Yeah, I mean, that's maybe fair, but, you know, I, I was essentially, like when this came up and when I was writing the, the secondary report, that's sort of when I became involved. I was going through, I went through sort of the ones from 2017, all the referrals I did, and then I was sort of trying to think back the previous ones. So maybe one or two in Smugglers Cove, I think maybe went across what we'd call a beach, but a lot of the ones we were doing were on bluffs and weren't, weren't across beach. So I would say, you know, it's been working so far, but I think council, their impetus behind the, the request is more sort of the fear that, that there then will be a dock application on the, like across the beach somewhere.
Well, and then we've got the other stuff to guide that. I'm, 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 I'm sort of leaning toward recommending we take out A, but also recommend that council initiate a mapping of beaches. And it, it doesn't need, you don't need to just, you know, survey it, but you can tell, I mean, go get a boat and go around the island and you can, you can then define, cause this is going to prevent this guy who has only boat access and a beach from having a dock and/or rebuilding his dock. Any of that sort of thing. And that's, that's just wrong.
Yeah. Tunsil Bay dock burns down, for instance, then you can't replace it bit by bit, and now it's, it's done. Tunsil Bay dock is a very important feature on Bowen Island.
It's, I've never seen it used.
Well, I, it's, it's, it's been there, people can fish off it, they can, you know, like I, I think being living on an island, you should frickin' have a lot of docks. It's just.
That's not one of those charming little docks, it's a big metal thing that goes out.
That may be an aside, but, but it's also totally related. So in this morning's Sun newspaper, there was an article about what's happening in Pender Harbor. Like, is everyone familiar with Pender Harbor? And so going back three years, in closed door sessions, the government and the local First Nations that are at the seashell ban got together and was part of the treaty process. And it, the ban was effectively given back a lot of rights over the foreshore throughout Pender Harbor. And the net effect of that is that Pender Harbor's been divided into three parcels, three portions, and one portion, you are no longer permitted to build a dock at all, and they're looking at required removal of docks in the other two portions. There's obviously a lot of pushback by owners of Pender Harbor who have their own properties and have docks. So the thrust of the question here is, because it's sort of related to this, and because we are on sacred territory of a different First Nation, have there been any conversations with the Swamish Nation about the foreshore on Bowen Island? And, you know, because I think that, that's proving to be a hurdle beyond belief. That makes this bylaw thing a minor itch.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think it's one of those things that maybe should be part of that, that greater conversation. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if that's been brought up at all, but I think it's something.
No, I mean, I know that the province is part of their 10 year referrals, like we get referred.
Right.
I know that the Swamish Nation gets referred to dock 10 year.
Right.
Applications as well.
So that's why, if there's been no, no reprisals or nothing.
Not that, I've heard, I mean, people are still getting their 10 years, so.
Right.
You know, but then I know that at, at various times I've recommended, or we've recommended that, like a proposed dock in with our setbacks, and they've been issued 10 year referrals, so. But I, I would think the Swamish Nations probably has a better, a stronger say than we say, they know variants to get their dock 10 year.
Right. So, I mean.
Those are, yeah, those are traditional lands of First Nations up there, yeah.
Right.
Whereas they've never had any establishments here.
Well, I don't know, I've been, I've had to go through, you know, archaeological assessments of properties on Bowen.
Did you find any?
No.
No, I don't. Yeah, we had one out at our place too.
Having to do one and not finding anything is funny, but it's.
Oh, yeah.
It does, it does mean that there is some.
Well, there was a presence here, but there was never any habitation per se.
And I want to be a huge aside, but I think it's, it's kind of an important one that might, there might be a discussion.
Going forward.
Could occur. But coming back to this, the only, the only, for me personally, the only value I can see in making any changes to the current bylaw wording is to add in more extensive eelgrass protection. And I haven't seen making other changes to their current bylaw, but that's me.
And I'll support that.
I agree with the bed, bed and patchy. My son's a scientist, so I emailed him today to ask him, what does that, what does that do? And he said, yes, it's important, it should be done.
Right.
I, I absolutely support the beds and patches. I agree, I physically divide the beach, seems like a prohibition in all circumstances, so it just seems, well, unnecessary.
And again, I agree on the, the eelgrass. The, the, the thing that's, I'm having difficulty with is, you look at a, a beach like Bowen Bay, which I think everybody would agree is a beach.
Right.
A lot of the foreshore is owned by, owned privately. And if one of those people came along and wanted to build a dock to get right over down the middle of Bowen Bay, I could understand.
I would say, no, yeah.
Yes, they have, exactly. But then, do you have to go so far as to say physically divide a beach to prevent that from happening? But at the same time, councils do need clear direction on what would be permitted and what would not be. I, I really like the idea of trying to zone beaches, and I have no idea how practical that is and whether it's even possible, but that way at least landowners would know what they're buying into. I think you could, you know, without surveying or anything, you can identify stretches of beaches around the island and identify, and you can take, and we know where the eelgrass is primarily and all those kinds of things, and we could establish some standards where docks may be allowed and not. And we were talking about that back in the dock prohibition days, but, and I think you could get, you know, one of the volunteer organizations or somebody who had boats and stuff to go, go around the island and check at low tide and high tide and identify these on, on a map, a topo map for you, that the staff could just go, take a trip with them and sort of verify. And then you could easily sort of then set some various regulations for each, and limitations for each one and, and others, you know?
Yeah.
Let it go. And that way we're not, we're not also, we avoid being accused of just totally, you know, killing everything, because there's, there's some good arguments in places to have docks.
Yeah.
And islands do have docks, and that's, that's all fair. We just don't want them in particular places where we're trying to use the shoreline.
The other, the other thing is, and I don't know if this is right, Daniel, but at a very super low tide, let's just say you've got a rock bluff and then a super low tide, it comes down into a nice, nice walking space along there, you know, that would be considered a beach because it's a low tide. Doesn't have to be high tide, or where does that?
Well, that's where you, that's where you look, where there's public access, where if it's just a slippery rock, you know, and does it connect up to anything else? Is there any distance there? Perfect example there you have, between Tunsil Bay and Sealy Beach, when it's a super low tide.
That's right, you just walk right along, so is that, you know, considered a beach?
People do that, yeah.
Yeah.
And supposedly our beach is a private beach.
But is that a beach?
The Sealy Park.
Yeah.
It's a beach, it's definitely a beach, low and high tide. There's a beach that goes up and down, yeah.
Is there such thing as a private beach?
Well.
Not to, not to high tide, unless you've got, unless you've got a water lease on that property.
Yeah, so there's no private beaches, but there's no, but it's considered a private beach when there's no public access.
Except if you come from the water.
Yeah. So that's, but yeah, I, I worry that, and I agree with you about having the beaches marked, but then you get somebody who is really keen to stop, and they just call everything a beach. So you're in the same, so there has to be some reasonability about.
Well, we, we had just going in and identifying upfront and.
So, but to the point that Michael raised a few minutes ago about somebody building a beach, a dock right across, say, Bowen Bay beach, is there anything now, I mean, obviously that should be prevented?
Like right now, we would look out of our list, right? So we'd say, okay, you're 10 meters back from the, are you five meters back from the property line projection? Are you 10 meters away from another dock? Are you 10 meters away from the public beach access? So if you met those and you met the maximum length, then you'd be allowed a dock and you could.
Okay. So, all right, in that case, complicated things a whole lot. Because obviously, obviously beaches of that sort, of public use.
That dock must be high enough under the current bylaw that it will allow that you can walk underneath.
And I don't know, like, the way that the property line projection works, sort of in concert with the length, stops sort of docks in some bays.
Yeah.
Like, I know is it.
Converge or?
Like, what's the one at the end of Woods Road, and then when you go straight, there's a, this, this bay here.
Oh, right.
Where the, the Buddhist society has their place, right? The way that those property line projections are, they kind of all converge because it's sort of, all the properties come in like a pie. And then you extend your property line projections, they all overcross and it's not possible to get.
Build a dock.
Yeah, it's not possible to fit, and then with shallow, and so you'd end up having to go up more than forty meters if you're, in the base of some, some bays or some beaches would be, you know, there's shallow breaks in a period, you would say, well, you can't get forty meters from the property line to get deep enough to have your dock, so you, you don't get a dock.
Yeah.
But, but I, I'd say that's not enough, I mean, so my sense is that the idea of A, um, is important in, in circumstances where that's a beach that it's, the public is using. We wouldn't want it, you know, divided in really any way like that, but it seems way too blunt an instrument for.
Yeah.
The way of it.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Where's the component of, uh, cause it, cause part of the change includes aesthetics and view impact.
Right.
And that's not, that's not in.
There's not, there's nothing here that includes.
There's some discussion.
It's in the OCP.
Yeah, I think the OCP talked about consistent with the orientation.
Policy's activity is, so, so the OCP talks about, you know, from my perspective, to, to answer David's and Michael's concerns, I'd rather see some wording that uses view impact rather than crossing a beach as a way, as a, as a tool to limit docks on Bowen.
But isn't that.
It's pretty subjective.
Subjective, not that down a little too, oh, I like that one, I don't like that one.
Well, maybe we get some beautiful, beautiful docks.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the mapping approach is really the most practi, I don't know how practical it is, but it seems like it's, it's necessary. To go along.
I take Bowen Bay particularly because the, the forshore is, they're considered by was privately owned, but there'd never be a docker across King Edward Bay beach or even the other pebbly beach. Because the forshore's a municipal land.
Well, that would be some deep bay.
Sorry?
Deeply beach deep bay.
Uh, no, Roger Curtis.
Okay, cause, cause the deep bay, actually there could be more docks.
Oh, there could be, yeah, yeah, I read Mr. Russell's.
Um, right.
And Mr. Betterson was.
Yeah.
I should just have my arm wrestle.
Does Bowen Bay, does it shell off enough even, like, is it, is it really, are we fussing about something that it can't happen anyway? Or does it shell off enough to actually have a dock that?
You'd have to, fifty feet at least.
Yeah, so that's, like, I don't think it's an issue.
How wide are the parcels, the land parcels?
They're pretty narrow.
But we usually go in bay as an example, I mean, we.
Yeah, but if we, if we are fussing about that and creating a, um.
They're, they're wide enough, like the one just north of the access is twenty-five meters wide.
Okay, and then our setbacks are five.
Ten from the access and five from your side, so you could fit within.
So you still, you still got sixty-five meters to work with?
But does it, but does, the beach, does it topography, you can allow it? Isn't it odd?
The boats aren't that far, I don't know, you know.
There is a tendency to look, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so then you're not gonna be able to.
Well, except I don't think that we can be authoritative on it without, you know, I think it, what we're looking for here is clarity, I think, yeah.
Right.
So, so what I'm hearing essentially is AP says they don't support the current proposed amendments.
I think that's correct, uh, with the exception of, um, increasing habitat.
I had Rowan and, and yes, lots more Eeny. You don't want to see other.
Should we add the, uh, habitat again back in?
Yeah.
Uh, to, for the eel grass?
Yeah.
Eel grass, how?
But I, no, it was never, oh, it's never, no.
Well, this is, this is what was in, was negatively impacting eel grass meadows, and so what they meant would be we would add the beds or patches.
Yeah. I think that's good.
Could leave B in there, it would basically eliminate A and C, C which is almost redundant. If you just had B, impede pedestrian access along the beach portion of the forshore, that, uh, eliminates C and.
B's already in there.
B's already there.
Right.
So, so we're.
Just take out A and.
So take out A and, and.
Except I, I mean, I want to have some comment about the intent, I mean, I don't know the counselors, I haven't asked the counselors to put A and C in there, but I understand the intent. Um, from the example of Bowen Bay and I, I mean, we'd have to work our way around the island and look at all the other beaches that are public, we wouldn't want something like that across. And I have no idea how many and whether there's deep drop offs and appropriate and so on. But so, like, something that helps deal with that issue of, of a.
You know, Bowen Bay?
Yeah, like Bowen Bay or other, exactly, something like that, but I don't know how to do it other than a map or something.
It seems that the legislation is premature. From what I hear, that there, there's a need for a study to identify A when beach is and B where they occur on the island and C which ones should be, um, open to having docks on which ones should not.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So.
And categorize them. Catalyze them.
And that, that then, then I think you can fine tune a, a bylaw to, uh, an environment where these things can, can, cannot occur.
So essentially, if the APs recommend council instead, you don't have a priority to.
Direct staff to embark on, yeah, decide, like, identify beaches on the coastline of Bowen Island?
Yeah, or, I mean, does APC talk about publicly, publicly accessible beaches or are you just, or are it just beaches that are appropriate for docks?
Or, or maybe, uh, identify beaches that are inappropriate for docks, um, as opposed to, like, having every beach and say it's a beach, it's inappropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause if you, if you take the, oh, let's say Webster dictionary of anything with shore pebbles is a beach. There may be beaches that are, you know, ten feet wide, that serve one property, that really needs to have a dock. And they can't have it with the way this is proposed, so, um, I, I think, I think the study should identify beaches that, that were, A, are public access. Uh, and B are kind of, would be significant in some way, um, that having a dock would, would be an obvious, uh, aesthetic and physical challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but my sense is that, that trying to word something without that is, is asking for trouble. Um, but however someone may want to try crafted motions other than.
Well, the motion, if really, isn't it, uh, to, uh, strike a.
Well, the motion, the motion, Dennis, could in fact be to retain the existing bylaw and add wording to it.
Okay.
Rather than taking this and taking things out of it.
Okay.
Uh, we could take the existing bylaw and add beds and patches to eel grass protection and that's our sole recommendation.
That's a recommendation, I like that.
Yeah, I, I.
And advocate for a mapping of.